Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Wednesday, May 24th. My name is Scott Bugbee. To my right is Jim Leehan. To my, his right is Jeff Palumbo. To Jeff's right is John Wellington from the Planning Board, Walter Byram from the Planning Board, Michelle Mayhew from the Planning Board, Marion Harrington, our Executive Secretary, and Jack Hathaway, our Town Administrator. I want to advise everyone this meeting is being audio and videotaped, consistent with open meeting law of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will be rebroadcast on NCTV's government channel and uploaded online to YouTube.
Well done.
Well done, well done.
Okay, first on our agenda, Jack?
We have a joint meeting with the Planning Board to consider appointing Greg Damiano?
Damiano?
Damiano, I know.
It's phonetic.
Well, yeah, I'm not unfortunately, as a member of the Planning Board. Then we have executive session. We have a Class II license application, liquor license hearing, interview for associate member on the zoning board, and then a number of action items and discussion of the fall town meeting date and Old Town Hall.
Perfect, great. Well, thanks guys, planning board for coming. I really, really appreciate that. Can we get a, I guess we just need a motion?
I will move to appoint Mr. Damiano as a full member of the Planning Board, term to expire on May 1st, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
A member who has been with us as an associate member for a year and has learned how to spell Planning Board, so I think he's a qualified member, and we support his nomination. I support his nomination. I say we.
I do too. I mean, I know he's been there, seen him at the TV, so appreciate your stepping up, Greg.
No problem.
Any other comments, questions? Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations.
Welcome back.
I think he still needs to get sworn in by Carol, right?
Yeah.
He does. Carol will help till Tuesday.
All right, I'll see you on Tuesday.
Thanks for taking time out of your night. Please stay though, it's gonna get more exciting. You gonna stay?
This may be, this may be the highlight.
You can't stay actually, we have executive session right now, so actually, I'm sorry, I gotta kick you out.
Michelle, Walter, John, thank you.
You also quit a quick meeting.
I know, I think it's, we're all gonna drive here then to do that, right?
If you guys in the Planning Board need a course on how to run a quick meeting or a show.
I don't think the meetings were as long now that I'm not leaving.
Michelle was much longer, she was much more efficient than I was.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Who is it? Executive now?
Yep, yep, we're doing it.
Yes.
Sorry, can you say that?
I move to go into executive session.
Okay.
Second. The chairman of the straight state that.
Yep, the litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect in the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares, we'll be taking no votes and we will return to a formal session after.
And this is specifically about the Lake Street litigation?
Lake Street. Scott Bugbee, I.
Click it off.
All right.
Okay, good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. We're back from executive session. Next on our agenda, we have a few folks coming in, but not until seven, so we're, I can attest to reviewing and signing the warrants as listed.
Please consider approving the search contract for FY18 water sewer treatment chemicals commencing 7/117 as attached and recommended by the DPW director.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, concerns that look good to me, yes? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Please consider approving the search contract for DPW supplies for 12 months commencing 7/117 as attached and approved by the DPW director.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing then, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please consider approval of the search contract for DPW rebid services and office supplies and paper as attached and approved by the DPW director.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Hearing then, alls in favor?
Aye.
Please consider appointing David Rosenberg.
Reappointing, I believe, right?
I reappoint.
No, it's okay.
No, my fault. To the, David Rosenberg, to the registrar of voters, registrar of voters, Democrat, term to expire on June 30th, 2020.
No issues for the town clerk, everything's fine?
No, and he was nominated by the Norfolk Democratic Town Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing then, alls in favor?
Aye.
Please consider appointing our facilities director, Matt Haffner, to the Public Safety Building Committee. I would recommend him joining, and it kind of goes in sync with Ray Goff, who I think you know now, has given his notice, he's been on serving on the committee, but Ray is leaving us to return to Rhode Island. Matt has been a strong participant in the Public Safety Building process.
I would second that. So moved. I'll second it.
Gotcha.
So I think I'm gonna second.
Or you can move it if you'd like.
Any other comments?
Why don't you move it, I'll second it.
I think Matt said a great thing.
He's very thorough in his, in his work.
And he's, he's not afraid to challenge the accepted practices, if you will.
That's good. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Matt.
That's what I meant by that.
I know, I understand what you meant too, because he's done a good job.
He has, he's, yeah, he has.
Unfortunately, we have a letter of resignation from Cindy Andre, no, I'm sorry, Andrea Langhauser.
Chris, thanks, Jim.
Yeah, no, that was her.
Don't scare me.
Andrea Langhauser, whose regrets to inform us that she must step down from the Community Preservation Committee. She and her husband are moving to Dartmouth, Massachusetts.
Do you have to accept that at the door, formal acceptance, that?
No.
No.
Okay.
But thank her for her service.
Absolutely.
She has contributed in many ways, Planning Board and CPC to the town, and we're grateful. Thank you.
Yeah, and Tori Dar.
One thing that we would like to do in conjunction with that is just a little, Bob Pachke is appointed to the CPC as the at-large position, and we thought it would be a good idea to just designate him as the precinct one person, because that's where Andrea was, Bob is also a precinct one, and then that allows you to pick an at-large person from anywhere in the town, so I think we recommend that you have a motion to move Bob to the precinct one position.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I move to move Bob Pachke to the precinct one position, term to expire June 30th, 2018.
Second. Any other comments? Hearing then, alls in favor?
Aye.
And then please consider appointing Cindy Andre, Alyssa Banks?
I don't think so.
Alyssa Banks and Joseph Vickers to the Norfolk Cultural Council, term to expire June 30th, 2020. This was at the recommendation of the Cultural Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, Jack.
And then, I can go upstairs and see if anyone's here, but all-town meeting date, Marion Magic put together a tentative schedule, oh, this is from last year.
Same dates, just a day may change.
The school, King Philip has asked us to try and firm up the date, just so, because they've got a lot of events going on this fall, the junior high.
Okay.
So if we, if we went with the same time period as last year, it'd be November 14th.
Okay.
So you don't really need to do anything, other than just allows us to tell.
Yeah.
I don't think we have anything timely going on, that at least I, that I know of yet. I mean, you know, Southwood or any other major projects that we need to have a town meeting for, so.
I mean, that's a, that's a, an option of town meeting.
Yeah.
So we can set the dates, but it may be that we may not need it.
Those schools do them calendar, so they have.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, so we'll reserve room and then we can.
Just observe it, but, you know, maybe we don't need it.
So you need to reserve probably what, the 14th and 15th, am I right?
Yeah, I think we have a two-day fall town.
I know, I was just saying, just, you know, we always do this practice. It'll be interesting.
And then the other thing we had on the discussion items was Old Town Hall, and I'd love to see this one again. So I think I, you know, we, we started talking about tearing it down, and then I, I think I came back to offline after hearing from Bob Pollak mostly, you know, just Bob raising the concern that if we tear it down, then we lose the, we lose any grandfathering for, to have a building there, and it, and it's because of the wetlands.
I have a question. We own the lot next door.
Yep.
There's a lot right next to it. The grandfathering, as I understand it, relates to the fact that it's closer to the street. It isn't, it isn't 25 feet from the street. So you'd have to build it on the same foundation that's now on. Isn't that what Bob's talking about?
I think that and, and the water, there's, there's water behind it.
Yeah, but that water's way back.
Like town apogamy?
It's, it's behind the garage.
Yeah, but I think there's a, I think there's a 200-foot buffer, so.
We've, we've got a full acre next, I think it's almost an acre.
I know we've got a lot next to it, I don't know how big it is.
So my, my question is, is if we tear it down.
Yep, could be used a lot next to it.
Well, you're gonna combine it with a lot next to it, we own it. So are we giving up that much theoretically, in terms of, of the existing footprint of that building? Are we really giving up that much? I mean, it, it doesn't appear to me that we are.
Can we get, obviously, I don't like clarification, can we get a definitive answer to that, like you said?
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely, we, you know, we have.
You see what I'm saying, going with this? I mean, I, I understand what Bob's saying, that if you, if you tear it down and you lose your grandfathering, can you rebuild if you don't use the same footprint?
Right.
But with that other lot, I would think that we could put a facility on that, whether it's a, whatever it is we might need at some point in the future, I would think that there's plenty of room. We talked about even selling that lot, as a building lot.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, off the top of my head, know all the ins and outs of the, again, that Jeff may know a little bit more from Planning Board, maybe not, but Board of Health, you've got so much experience, it's hard to remember which experience is relevant.
All of it's relevant.
Or none of it.
You know, there's that, to use an old conservation term, an underground stream, but there's a, there's a.
If you can't see it, it doesn't count. That was the ruling.
I know, but there is that, there, so anyway, so we can, I guess we need to, we need to figure out what.
I would look at it and say.
If we don't know what we want to use it for.
Is the building lot, is the lot next to Town Hall, billable lot? I was under the impression it was.
By itself, I don't know.
By itself.
But if we combine it?
Because I think that's zone 30,000, I think that's zone 30,000 square feet. It's not an acre, I think.
I don't know, yeah.
But I was told, anyway, that that was a building lot. So if that's a building lot, I, I don't see where we're gonna have a problem.
I don't know, but off the top of my head, it seems, that seems like a very narrow lot, but I'm not, so I'm not sure if you got the frontage.
That's the question.
Well, but you've got the frontage on the other lot, combined.
Also, if you combine them.
Yeah, you combine them.
But I just ask the question of you on.
But, but most of the building is on the other parcel. You don't have the issue with the wetlands.
Right, and when we had that GLM plan done a couple of years ago, just a, you know, back of the napkin sketch, it depends on if you, how much parking space you want. I mean, so I guess we gotta figure out what we want to, I, my only concern is we gotta figure out what we want to do with that land before we start limiting our options.
I, I understand that, but we, we have a building that is falling apart.
Yep.
Falling, literally falling apart. We can't just let it sit there anymore.
Yep, we could board it up, but Jack has my idea, you know, we could do some.
That means it's really bad.
But no one should be in it though, I mean, that's the point, like.
But it's, it's like Southwood, you know, I mean, you know, we board Southwood up every other week. It's, it's dangerous, and it's also disgraceful looking for people coming up Main Street. I mean, it's terrible. So you can't leave it. So what are your options?
I mean, well, the options we've talked about in the past, whether, why don't we wanna sell it?
CPC, CPC doesn't want to fund it, we, you know, to restore it, and it would be pretty tough to restore it anyway, so in, in defense of that.
You're welcome, plan.
It would be pretty, pretty tough to do that.
Thank you.
I just, I guess I would ask us, let's, let's find out that if we tear it down, what are we left with in terms of what we're able to construct or not construct? And that, to me, would drive the answer. If we can build a building on those combined lots, that at some point in the future, 10 years, 15 years, whatever, you know, community center, whatever the town may need, because that's the only land we own in the B1 district. But we can't just continue to ignore this. I mean, it's, it's hazardous to me.
I, I don't disagree.
All right, so let's just come back then, and see what, you know, like, if we get answers.
I can get that answer.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I understand it may cost 25 grand to tear it down, but I think that's.
I'm not worried about that.
I'm not worried about it, but.
But we got it, we got it.
I just don't want to lose what we can, I just want to limit ourselves in case.
But, but if, if keeping it.
Right.
In its current state, retains something of that nature, unless that is the only option.
Right.
The only option. I'm just saying, that's not a fair trade for me, because the thing is just dangerous. It's dangerous. That's just my thoughts. It's a dangerous.
I just want to lose, like I said, I just want to preserve all our options, ideally, and get rid of an eyesore.
I mean, we do have that parking lot, I mean, the whole, the parking lot is not, you know, we haven't given anything away there. That's the reason we didn't give the right away, is because we wouldn't have been able to use that property for some future development. That was the reason we didn't do it. So I would look at the whole parcel, right up to 106, 108 Main Street, right up to the boundary, and say, okay, this is all our land, what, if that building is gone, what, what ability do we have to build on that property? That, to me, would answer the question.
Okay.
I mean, you guys jump in.
Yeah, it's almost like, if that lot next to it, if one of them is not buildable, it almost reinforces your thought, you know, knock the, the building down, you know, demo it, because, you know, we're gonna have to put them together to have something of value anyway.
Which I think we probably will.
Yeah.
But it's, it's something we need to decide. I mean, it's been.
We can bring it up next, we can put it on the agenda for next time too. If you have an answer, then we'll move next up.
It's been years since we've toured with this.
A little bit past, excuse me, a little bit past our seven o'clock, we have Speedmaster Motor Cars LLC for a Class II license application. Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Please join us.
You may want to come over here, because that's what's just sitting in the sun.
If you can introduce yourself.
Jared O'Neil. I guess Speedmaster Motor Cars, also Island Lightning and Power, another business in town. But for this matter, 50% one of the members of Speedmaster Motor Cars LLC.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what do you, I mean, I read through the update, I think we all did. What are you looking, Jack explained a little bit to me, but just tell us, what are you looking to do?
So basically, we've got, we've got a building in Sixth Hill Street that we, we've rented for a long time and now purchased, and had built a new headquarters up in.
Sure, beautiful, yeah, no, very well.
Thank you. That we're gonna move into shortly. The use for that building, we'll probably rent a portion of it, but to some degree, we want to keep a few cars that we own and then in the future will own or sell, and kind of trade, just classic cars, like kind of a private collection, more or less, that, you know, if we grow it or tend to sell more, we just want to take on the efficiencies of having a dealership license, you know. No interest in advertising cars outside.
Or explaining them outside, nothing like that?
Just, you know, private dealings where everything is kept inside. Quality of the cars would be inside holding, and no hoods up with the S A L E.
So not a lot of traffic, I mean, not a lot of people coming by, it's not gonna disturb the neighbors.
Yeah, I wouldn't think, I don't think we'd even have a sign, it would just be more private, you know, we wouldn't even want people to know it was there, just less.
It's a liability, yeah.
Yeah.
No cars in there.
We just strictly want, you know, to have that dealer plate, so if we do have a car, we can drive it.
I can move it out.
Before we sell it, having to register it and all that, so, yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, I mean, we had discussed, you know, some concerns, you know, Jack and I, and I think you've addressed them in your comments here this evening, so, you know, that being the case, I don't have any concerns with the license.
You want to put one of your classic cars in there, Mr. Leehan? I think he's already, he's already contemplating, he's like, let me see, I got a 14 Buick, or 06?
1908. That's not for sale.
It does drive it out, it's nice.
You leave it away once or something.
Selling is the hard part.
Give it to, not away.
I get to, I get to sit, I get my pictures taken.
No, I, I wish you well with it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing then, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck with your new.
Yeah, it looks nice up there.
Nice to have you there.
Thank you very much.
Nice to have you there.
We're excited.
Yeah, well, we're excited to have you.
And also, what's to come up there as well, with all the other parcels.
Well, you won't have far to get the police to.
Yeah, that's right.
It'll be a short ride.
Take care, yeah.
Hopefully it won't be.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yep, take care. Have a safe summer.
You're welcome. Mary Ellen?
Yep.
Well, do we have to wait till 7:10, 50, since it's a public hearing?
No, it's about two minutes.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Does the clerk have the?
No, please. I witnessed that. No, please.
Jeff, do you have the public hearing notice? Have you?
Yes, I do.
Too many orders, sir?
Okay.
Your new job.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
There's a note, you have a second?
Maybe it's done?
Okay, notice is hereby given, that under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on May 24th, 2017, at 7:10 PM on an application submitted by Mary Ellen Blue, licensee and manager, doing business as Silla's Coffee House. The applicant seeks an alteration to the alcoholic beverage restaurant license at 5A Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, 02056. Such alteration consists of outdoor seating for 12 to 15 patrons in a roped-off occupied area consisting of 340 square feet. This hearing will be held in Room 124, Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. So just for clarification, we are not in 124, we're downstairs because of a meeting of the ZBA upstairs, but fair enough. So signed by the Norfolk Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you, Jared. So Mary Ellen, welcome.
Thank you.
What's your plans?
Well, we're just trying to, yeah, trying to extend the liquor license without conserve alcohol outside in that little area. I get asked all the time, people come in for a drink, and they're like, can I take it outside? And I say, no.
It's we're on premises only, the old days, yeah?
Yeah, so I would like to be able to offer that to my customers, and have a little roped-off area, you know, I think in the diagram it would show that it'd still be an area where people would be able to walk by with baby carriages and so forth. You know, you see them up at Patriots Place, so just have some good-looking, you know, roped-off area fencing, so that it was, it's strictly.
So they walk in between the building and the fencing?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Even though the physical therapy doesn't use that door, you know, I think it's an exit for them.
Can give it to walk by, I see.
Yeah. I did call my security system, I didn't have cameras on that side of the building, and I just put a camera in, so now I have complete access to the restrooms and that entrance. So if there was anything to go on, I'd have it on tape, which has proved to be very helpful. It's been a few times where I've been able to, I felt uncomfortable as a woman, somebody's entered my shop, and I called the police, and I've been able to zoom into somebody, and it's really, you know, then I've gone back to the station. So if there was anything to ever happen, it would be caught right on that security.
Jack, you had said Bob, zoning-wise, police-wise, no issues?
No issues. Chief Stone was okay. Bob's only concern was just make sure you don't block the sidewalk, and she's already addressed that, so.
I assume the land is okay, not that it's.
Yeah, I called him right away, he was all for it. I think he knows how hard I'm trying to just survive up there. I think that for people driving by, if they see lights, if I have it really.
It kind of, it breeds success, kind of people think, hang, stop by.
And whatever I do will be good-looking, it won't be like some kind of, you know, cheesy thing. I'll make sure that it's attractive and has, you know, plants and lights and.
You can put those heat lamps, if it gets cold, even if it's the summer, like, you know, what people sit underneath, I'm right?
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds great. 'Tis the season, people want to be outside.
Well, they do.
Yeah, it is nice to outside and have a drink.
I think it's a great idea, all for it.
Good, great.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, do you have the certified mailings?
I do, I have those, and I also have a check for you. I just wanted to make sure how much, I have to write it down.
Oh, okay.
No, it's 83 something.
For the ad, you mean?
Yeah.
Thought they were standard amounts, 83 something?
Did you reduce, did you reduce, did you reduce the $10 bonus for the chair?
Only 10?
Chair.
Jeff's seen that, Jeff was always doing better than I was. Jeff got a new car, I don't have a new car.
It's a company vehicle, I told you.
Okay.
That's what they all say.
8380.
So I have not, I apologize, I have not been there for, I've been there for coffee and lunch.
I told you, Jack, I would.
I know, I have been there for.
The nephews make good drinks.
I always come in the back, and as you, I know, we're there every, we have a little gathering every Friday morning, and I've never, I didn't realize you had that seating up front until climbing, I just said, oh, she's coming in, I'll take a look, and there it was.
Yep, we've got umbrellas, so there's a couple of my beer guys that live in town, and they've been so great to me. So they just want this to work in the right way, so.
We do too.
Three, three new umbrellas.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, thank you.
I'll let you know about the, because we're going to be succeeding.
Okay.
Send us the other, all right?
Yep.
I'll let you know when I hear.
Are they quick, are they quick behind, is it pretty good?
Thank you.
They might be quick this time of year, because it's not tied up with everything else.
Plus, she already has one.
Yeah, sure. All right, we're still, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, thanks to Mr. Leehan.
Oh, sure.
What do you got for us, Jack?
Two things. One is a very long letter from Chief Bushnell to Mr. Miller, who's the Director of Office of Emergency Medical Services. So I, I think hopefully, because you saw all the dilemma, trauma, drama going on, the new Director of Office of Emergency Medical Services is working with the chief and has, has approved Engine 2 to be an ALS transport.
That's good. They want to get a new director.
It was bad, 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 we were ready to.
Bad, 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 good.
And then all of a sudden, good.
What, they got a new director, I don't understand, it all happened like?
Relatively new director, I think he's been there for six months or so, through the help of Senator Ross's office, and Cole left him a message, and then I, and I think Senator Ross's office reached out for us. The Director called the chief, and they had a great conversation. Cole said they hit it off, and.
Good, good.
He's all for us continuing to operate as we always do, operate, so...
Check that one off.
Yeah, so that was, uh...
That's good news.
That was good news. Cole's persistence paid off. Representative Dooley also offered his assistance, so... He did, you're right. And Representative, both the Representative and the Senator have been helping just continue conversations with, uh, the state, talking about the forty-B approval, uh, or the forty, I should say, the forty-B application that is, uh, before them for Secong Street.
We haven't heard anything yet, right? They said, he said...
We have not. At the last, Sean, Representative Dooley, uh, got word to us that it wouldn't happen now until after Memorial Day, so that's hopefully next week, you know, I mean...
That's at least two, three weeks.
Unusually long time.
Late, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, unusually long time.
Now, of course, the whole thing was affected because of, uh, the weather issues.
Yeah, we had, we had to reschedule the sidewalk on, so...
I think it was maybe twice.
It's still, it's still more than normal.
Yeah, they're supposed to turn around in ninety, or is it sixty days?
Sixty.
And we're well past ninety now.
But you, when you spoke, they said that was a, a, not a deadline, but a preferred, preferred turnaround as opposed to high and clad, right? It's not, it's not a legal turnaround time, but...
Correct. They, they said that's their goal.
Policy, their policy, yeah.
So, yeah, so we've been active with Senator Ross and Senator Ross and Representative Dooley lately. They've been very helpful. The, as far as the Public Safety Building, um, we are, um, I've signed the, the contract with the general contractor. The MECC has not signed it. I'm hoping they're gonna sign it tomorrow. And, uh, we've also signed the intermunicipal agreement between the MECC and Norfolk to hire the same general contractor, which we had to do for procurement, procurement reasons. We've authorized the project manager to issue the notice to proceed to the general contractor. We met with him today. Um, real nice guy. He's, uh, he's, he's working on the Foxborough Town Hall right now and, uh, everything I've heard from that project is it's going very well. The architect has worked with the contractor before. Um, he said they did the, uh, Dennisport Police Station? Is that right?
Dennis.
Dennis Police Station. Um, and everything I've heard from that one is good.
It's a beautiful facility.
Yeah. So, seems like it's, uh, finally making some headway on that and, uh...
And the other good news on that was the subcontractors.
Yeah.
Were all high-end, uh, well-regarded, well-reviewed, well-experienced people, so the, the whole collective crew seemed to be a pretty, at least from the architect's perspective, so these are all good, good choices, so...
I forget which one, but I think one of the gen, one of the subs has a reputation of trying to get some change orders in, so, so we're all aware of that and we're, we'll be managing that to the best of our abilities.
Good luck.
Yeah.
So, good luck to get him in.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. So, I, I hope to have all those documents signed and returned, uh, tomorrow. We'll be moving forward.
I think I'll just run upstairs and see if Mr. Howe is... Okay, it's early. It's only seven eighteen, man.
That's true.
He told me he was gonna come early, though, and wait.
I did just see a car by.
You can take a break.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to usurp you, Mr. Chair.
We'll be in our five-minute recess.
There was a lot of people upstairs.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back.
It's going OZBA.
We are back in session. Um, we now have Mr. Devin Howe to, uh, for consideration of associate member for the ZBA.
Yes.
Correct. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming out tonight. You don't have to dress up so nice to make us look, you know, make me look bad.
I always, always dress to impress.
Dress to impress. Well, we appreciate that. Thank you. Um, we did get a copy of the resume. One just kind of gives, gives a little background on what, you know, what your interests might be, or...
So my background is in civil engineering. I graduated two years ago in August from Wentworth Institute of Technology and I currently work for the land planning, permitting and civil engineering firm, Beals Associates, located in Boston.
I know Beals.
Do you know Larry himself, or the, just the company?
I know the firm.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. Larry's been, done work in town.
Yeah, he has.
He's, he's been all over the place. But I've worked on a variety of projects for Beals Associates. I've worked from the beginning, uh, you know, a client gives us a call and we create concepts for the client, reading through the zoning bylaws and all the associated bylaws, conservation, the, uh, Wetlands Protection Act. And we, and I personally create the concepts as a result of those bylaws. So I'm very, uh, uh, excuse me. You know, I, I deal with it on a daily basis and understand and how to apply what's shown in the bylaws to the plans we produce. And moving forward from conceptual design, you know, I, um, have taken full part in permitting processes. Quite recently, we got approved in Groton, Massachusetts, uh, the Music Center at Indian Hill, which is, uh, it's quite an impressive project. I think there's twelve hundred outdoor seating, seven hundred parking spaces, quite an enormous, uh, project team that worked on it and I was...
And did any variances and everything like that at all?
Um, I think we required a few variances. Uh, we exceeded impervious, uh, area on the property. I don't, well, I think there was just, it might have been a few more variances, but I can't recall them off the top of my head.
Is that a municipal project or is that a commercial, uh, project?
Uh, what do you mean by that?
Uh, municipal, is it a town?
Sponsored, kind of funded.
Oh, it was, it was privately funded.
But it was, it was a town pri, I mean, it doesn't matter, but I'm just wondering, you know, was your experience more on the commercial side, residential, or with municipalities?
Uh, I work more so with, uh, commercial. We don't work as often with municipalities. We're, we're more on the commercial.
Okay.
So...
First, Devin, thanks. Um, you're welcome and we, we appreciate your stepping forward. I know you've talked with Mike.
Yeah.
The chairman of the ZBA. I, I did, this is just more of a comment so that for, for your benefit, whether or not you're prepared for what you're getting into. Because, you know, traditionally, the ZBA has been sort of a quasi-legal or judicial process whereby they either approve or disapprove variances to existing zoning. Right now, they're confronted with fortyBs. They are the, uh, venting and approval process in town for fortyB projects and we've got a number of them before, before you be, and, and that's one of the reasons I know Mike is excited about potentially getting you on the board because you, you bring an engineering background. Because that board, traditionally, Jeff was on the planning board, so he's got that experience, but most people in the ZBA don't have that experience. They're not in the permitting business. They're more in the, as I say, more of the judicial, does it violate our basic zoning considerations? I just want to be sure you know that, what you're getting in for here because it is going to be one of the most active boards in town for the next couple of years. These fortyBs are, um, they're gonna be around for a while and, uh, they need to be managed and that board needs as much expertise as it can get, uh, to provide them some good guidance through this maze of process because it's not a personal thing for them. You know, our, our, when developments come into town, they go to Jeff's old board, the planning board, and, you know, these folks have a fairly good wealth of experience and a lot of outside assistants, consultants and what have you to help them through that. The ZBA really has none of that. And, um, now that the fortyBs are kind of at our doorstep and in process, that all goes to the ZBA under the law, not to the planning board. So, um, it, you're, you're gonna be challenged. Your, your, your expertise is gonna be needed and, um, and, and there are gonna be a lot of people that aren't happy with the process that's going on.
And I, I, I fully understand that and...
Just want you to know that...
They're meeting right now upstairs in New Hampshire and after the...
Yeah, the, the ZBA is in a different environment than it has been in the traditional role of our prior twenty years. It's, it's fallen into a different kind of a battleground at this point in time, so... Your expertise is, is really, you've got a great resume and your expertise will be very valuable to the board, but you're in for some work. Just want to be sure you know it.
If, if you don't mind me adding, I've worked on the, uh, Boston Landing Project, which is the New Balance World Headquarters.
Oh, yeah.
And I've, I've personally worked on the infrastructure there and the utilities for the new Celtics facility that's actually fully under construction, as well as the residence is building as part of that Boston Landing Project.
Don't forget the Bruins.
I didn't have as much of a part on the Bruins.
I just didn't want you to... Talking to hockey, right? I just don't want, don't want you to leave them out. Because I've been to that facility. It's a beautiful facility.
I, actually, I take that back. I did have, I, I had a part. We need to get a, we need to get a, we need to get a sign permitted.
Great. All in favor? I, I just wanted to be sure you knew that, that, you know, that you're, it's, um, it's gonna be a, it's, it's a board that's gonna have a lot of attention. So, uh, they'll welcome your help, I'm sure.
I mean, it does only, they only do meet monthly, though, but they do have a lot of projects coming out.
Only they meet monthly. It'll, it'll be interesting.
It might be picking up.
Some of these bigger fortyBs, it'll...
Maybe. Like I said, they have a meeting upstairs. I'll read them right now going on.
Yeah, I've gone through the town, the town calendar and I, I thought I recalled seeing a few, uh, special meetings.
Yeah, like, like I said tonight. Were any of your, uh, projects that you were involved in, fortyB type of projects? You're familiar with the fortyB?
Yes, I am. I'm familiar, but no, no.
No, yeah. I mean, it, it is, like Jim said, it's a, it's a different experience, uh, you know, as far as the, you have the developer who's moving ahead with a project and normally, you know, we have certain bylaws in the town which the boards and committees will apply, particularly the planning board will apply, um, to the project and that, um, is mu, a mu, a much different process with the ZBA. It's much more of a negotiated type of situation between the applicant, developer and the ZBA. So you'll be, you'll be part of that because all those discussions, whether it's planning boards or ZBA, it's a negotiation. It's a negotiation, you know, trying to figure out what makes sense and where, you know, parties can, can find a middle ground, you know, something that everyone can live with. And typically, you've got a fair number of, um, you know, residents engaged, you know, particularly with the fortyBs, so they'll be in attendance and, um, you know, people, people like the town. They, they, they like the town. They like the rural character of it, of it, so oftentimes they'll be bringing, you know, concerns related to development to those meetings and so, um, you'll, you'll figure it out pretty quickly in terms of that dynamic where you've got...
I've, I've worked in contentious environments, especially with the Music Center. There was some great, great opposition to that.
Yeah.
It sounded like a good thing, but it's part of the party. To me, who doesn't want, who doesn't want outdoor music unless you're abutting and you're gonna hit us out?
It was direct abutters.
It's always gonna be.
They, they had some concerns that we addressed.
So you're up for it?
I am.
Well, thank you.
I wouldn't be here if I wasn't.
I didn't think you would.
It's a great experience. I give you credit. I mean, you recognize that it's a great experience and it's, it's, it's good for the town. You're giving back to your town and it's appreciated. We need, we need people to step up.
We're only as good as the volunteers we get, so thank you.
I'll keep my mind to my own.
I moved to, would you accept a motion?
Yes, please.
I moved to appoint Devin Howe as associate member of the ZBA.
Second.
Uh, any other further questions?
It's a one-year term, I believe, correct?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. One-year term, yeah. So it expired June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, well, the questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Devin. Congratulations.
Devin, thanks a lot.
We really appreciate it.
It was a pleasure to chat with you all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So just to echo Jim's comments for one second, just, I, I mean, I, I would encourage you, and I, I have no doubt that you will anyway, but encourage you to, to bring your expertise and, and, and don't be afraid to, to wield it, um, if you will. It's a, the ZBA is a great board, um, but as the members have said, they're, you know, they've got some expertise in legal background and, uh, you know, there's no, there's no, uh, engineering background like you have and so you bring a new tool to the town and, uh, you know, whether you need to, you know, raise a flag to the chairman and, and say, you know what, in order to protect the town, we either need to review this or we need to hire a consultant or, or do whatever we have to do. You know, I, I, I just encourage you to, don't be, don't be shy about, um, you know, if you have concerns based on your expertise, that you raise them and, uh, you know, make sure the town is protected.
And that, yeah, because that means the neighbors too, so you're gonna be looked at that. And the development, not be in favor, but your, you're certainly your fellow neighbors because like you said, it's normally, we're trying to protect.
Do it, do it your way.
Be fair to the developer, but more cases, it's the, as you know, from that music project, the butters aren't happy. You go upstairs right now, you're gonna see they would like, have no proj, obviously, fine line between no project and a workable project and a reasonable project. So if you can help with that, that'd be great, yeah. Let's put, let's play a new question right there.
Yeah, we want to end up with a fair decision. Uh, I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't, don't, you know, we're not trying to deny everything. We want to get to a fair decision. But we've realized that there are, there are A-plus developers and there are some developers who aren't A-plus and we want to make sure we, we are, we treat them the way, you know, we, we protect the town, the way the townies protect.
I, I look forward to applying the law.
Yeah, no, and I, no doubt you will.
I have no doubt either.
Devin, a question for you because this is, um, it's something that's unique to serving in government, you know, whether it's local or state, federal, but you have this whole idea of open meeting and such, so I don't know how much you know about it, but you definitely want to bone up on that so that...
The open meeting law?
You know what constitutes a quorum and then there's restrictions and such and sort, you know, so, so, yeah, make sure that you bone up on that. I don't know what we offer, whether we give something...
When we, when you get, when you get sworn in by the town clerk, he'll give you a pamphlet that tells it all about.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm aware of the law, but I'm, I'm not exactly certain on the, the exact definitions.
Any of us can help you with that.
And Michael, through your chair, he's well-versed. Jack, anyway.
Carol, wait, certainly, he's been doing it a long time, so he's...
Carol's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'll have to go to the town clerk at some point and just get sworn in.
I'll get you an appointment.
Thirty seconds.
Okay.
Okay. And then you take it to her.
Okay.
All right?
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks for coming in today.
Nothing to do. Like I said, tonight, there's a meeting, a ZBA meeting going on right now.
Feel free to sit in.
You're welcome to.
What room upstairs?
Right upstairs, one-twenty-four.
One-twenty-four.
Almost right above the big meeting room upstairs.
You'll find the ground.
Yeah, I'll be sure it's interesting. Who wants to check it out there before you get appointed, so maybe you go there and you see it, like, okay.
Yeah, one, one floor. Two years before you, uh, right next door.
A few.
Two years.
Just a few.
Just a few.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah. You forgot more things that you remember.
He's the same age as your daughter.
Pretty much.
Oh.
That's me.
Couple years old.
Hey, my son just graduated, so...
He's still got a kid now. He's a little, it's a little child, I'm sure.
He's still a child. He's still a child. All right.
Uh, that's about all I had. Uh, want to ask a question?
Just one very brief update, uh, on KP. Um, you, I think you may or may not know that, um, Plainville seems to be somewhat stuck at a three percent budget level. Um, there is...
They're meeting again, right? I think the...
Yeah, they're meeting, I think they met last night.
Oh, was it last night? I thought it was tomorrow.
Today's today. Today is, it was Monday.
Today's the twenty-fourth, so...
It was Monday night. There was a, a, a community-only meeting based on a petition that's going around Plainville. The parents are trying to get the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, to increase that contribution.
Wow.
I don't know what the sta, I tried to...
They could do that, they could do that town meeting too, if they really get them...
They can, but they gotta take it from someplace.
Right, no, I'm just saying, they could, they could force this through though, a town meeting.
They're better getting it done at the front end so that the selectmen have a chance to kind of work the budget than they are trying to move this money at town meeting, but at least at this particular point in time, it is not good news. Rentham went to that meeting, was the night of our town meeting, and, um, tried to get Plainville to support a one or one and a half percent budget, which would have been devastating to the school, absolutely devastating.
That's...
And it, it just, it's, I, I can't either. I, I mean, I have, my thoughts are harsher than...
Yes.
I will say, but I mean, that is just, regardless of what views you may have of the budget process, and I would agree that it's a flawed process.
But you still can't punish the students and the future students.
Well, you would. You'd be punishing the kids. You'd basically be just taking a baseball bat to the kids. But we're hopeful that if, if they can get up to three and a half percent, uh, based on what I've seen from the superintendent as of yesterday, uh, we, we can, I think, get through the year okay. If, if it holds at three, then there are gonna be some cuts.
There was a little bit of an increase in special ed too, right?
It was.
The Senate, the Senate approved.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're still working through that.
Yeah, but I thought they had a net loss because of some other charter schools.
They did. Yeah, their charter school numbers went up, uh, but, uh, or down, I should say.
Yeah.
But, um, you, you know, there's, there's, it's still work in progress, but if it's a three percent, some cuts are unavoidable. They're just unavoidable.
The, I just double-checked. The Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen from Plainville are meeting tomorrow night. They're talking about the budget.
So, we'll know. Yeah, but I believe there was a meeting of the citizens on Monday, Plainville only. And, uh, I know that a lot of Norfolk residents have been, um, really petitioning, well, working, if you will, this, uh...
Lobbying?
Lobbying, that's a better word. Thank you. They've been lobbying folks over in Plainville trying to make sure that they're aware of what the impact of that decision is. So we'll see where it, it ends up, but, uh, I sure hope they get up to three and a half. I'd love to see them at four and a half, but I think that's gonna be out of their reach now.
Good news. I, tennis team is, is bound for the playoff, playoffs?
They were born with Kelly, Kelly Rex.
Right. That's super.
Oh, they went with Kelly Rex.
That's good.
Yeah, the boys, I think, did too, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to say the girls' lacrosse team will not be playing postseason.
The boys' lacrosse, I think, would be, I think, uh...
The boys are...
So keep your fingers crossed on, uh, tomorrow night and see how it goes.
And the town meetings at both towns are first week of Jim, right?
First week of June. First week of June.
First week in June, so next week, yeah, they are. They're both, I believe they're Monday night of, whatever, the Monday right after Memorial Day.
June, June 5th.
Also too, remind the people at home, Memorial Day Parade.
Yes, yeah.
May 29th, Monday, 8:00 AM. Community Day, June 3rd. Hey, we'll get you.
Wonderful day.
Yeah. My daughter's birthday.
Mine too.
Oh, gee, I didn't know that. Happy 21st to both of you.
Thank you. Obviously, you were on a math major.
I was a finance major, though. I'm not the one having a 50th college reunion like you.
Are you guys in the pie eating contest?
Yeah. Mr. Happ, I mean, I'm hoping Mr....
Are you in it?
Last year? No, I was in it last year.
They got me in it this year, so I don't know.
Are you doing it?
Yeah, they, they got me in it.
I'm not, I'm away.
Okay. Good luck. I did, I did it last year.
I know Cole's in it, so it'll be, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be another, it'll be another pie face.
Yeah, I did it last year.
No, I did it last year. Did you with me?
Yeah, I think it was last year.
Well, it's my turn again.
Good.
There's pictures of Jim and I doing it a long time ago.
We did it the first time, the very first time, where they had real pies.
Real pies.
It was blueberry pies. And we actually ate the whole thing and, I mean, I, about two hours later, I was on the biggest sugar high I've ever had my entire life. I mean, oh my God.
Liz and I were going to a wedding that day for one of our college roommates and...
You cannot eat an entire blueberry...
About a third of the pie and then stopped.